Call the meeting to order. Welcome to the School District of Waukesha. This is the full board meeting held on May 14th, 2014. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please call the roll?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzync.
Yes.
Steve Edlin.
Here.
Ellen Landel.
Yes.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien. Karen Reinacek. Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, will you please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm just gonna make a quick, brief, brief announcement. This last week, the board had elected new officers. And Sue Endur is our secretary. We thank her for filling that important role. Pat Madden is, once again, our clerk. Bill Baumgart is our treasurer. Barbara Brzync is our vice president. And these folks had elected me president. And I'm thankful for that. And one of the things I'd like to say is, in the past, we've worked extremely well as a team. And as a team is how we get the work done on the board here. So I look forward to having us agree disagreeably at times, but still accomplish the most important work to creating the best educational experience that we can provide our students here in Waukesha to give them a great future. So, thank you, everyone, and thank you for filling these important roles. Tonight, we do have bright lights. And Dan Zimmer, Ruth Bentley, and Roy Blakenham from Sedexo. They're going to present to us a winner of a contest called the Future Chef Competition. And I will allow you to introduce that winner.
Great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Dan Zimmer. I'm the general manager for Sedexo. With me tonight, we have Ruth Bentley, our operations manager, Roy Blakenheim, our elementary manager. On March 26th, we had five finalists from the Waukesha Schools compete in the 2014 Future Chef Competition hosted by Sedexo. These five students were part of the young chefs who competed nationally in this year's Healthy Sandwich Competition. Students in the 4th and 5th grades at all Waukesha Elementary Schools were asked to submit their favorite healthy sandwich recipe. From 28 entries, we narrowed it down to five finalists, chosen and asked to compete for the title of Future Chef. Marissa Jansen and Melinda Ballmer from Bethesda, Natalie Parker from Prairie, Erica Henderson from Randallstem, and Rachel Sanders from Summit View were our top five finalists. Judges for the competition were Sedexo executive chef Tim Munch, and Waukesha consumer ed teachers Mary Chetney and Nadine Kruger. The recipes were judged on taste, originality, presentation, ease of preparation, and healthy attributes, and also kid appeal. After preparing the recipes with the help of Sedexo mentors, the students displayed their creations for the judges, spectators, and press. Once the judging was completed, samples were enjoyed by all present and awards were given out to the finalists. We have our winner here tonight, and that is Erica Henderson. You wanna step up? She was given the title of Future Chef for her Floral Moon creation. It's a sandwich that has lots of vibrant colors. Corn, red pepper, jalapenos, mandarin oranges are part of the ingredients. And we were so impressed by the number of students and their creativity and their presentation. We have a little slideshow of all the, from the event. And we were very pleased with the turnout and success of the event. And we'd like to say thank you to everyone who participated, our staff, colleagues, everyone from the schools that came out to support their students. And it was just a great event for all. And hopefully, next year, y'all can attend and taste the creations, because they were wonderful. Six recipes from across the country will be featured on Sedexo menus next year. This past year, we had recipes that featured salads. That was the competition last year was healthy salads. So this year, on our menus, we had healthy salads. So...
I like the hats.
at all the schools. And again, to Erica for just the wonderful job that she did. Congratulations.
Yeah, will, do any of my fellow board members have questions? Mr. Baumgart?
No question, but Dan told me earlier that if we saw those presentations and hadn't eaten yet, we'd be hungry. And you were right. Not just the quality of the food, we only got to taste one of them, but just the appearance of all of them, quite attractive, which is important to our appetites.
They were judged on their plate presentations.
Yes, I could see that.
So they really went all out for making sure they had a perfect plate, making sure that...
They had a perfect plate to display. It helped in winning the competition.
Good.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Brzync?
Well, I told Erica how proud I was of her and how much I enjoyed her recipe, and especially because there were some jalapeno peppers in there. And I'm not usually one that likes jalapeno peppers, but there was just a tiny bit, just enough, to make it very, very tasty. So I thought that was a very, very good decision. And in conversation with her, she told me her father, who's with her this evening, was her role model for cooking. And he likes to cook, and so he taught her a lot how to cook. And to Sedexo, thank you for giving our students the opportunity. What a wonderful thing to do and give these young people a chance to show skills and talents that we don't even know that they possess. So thank you for all of your support.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Erica, I have just one question, and I think you can, you'll be fine with giving me this answer. How did you come up with the name of that sandwich? And what was it again?
Floral Moon.
Uh huh.
Um, I came up with it because when I made it, it, um, when the peanut pocket, when you folded it in half, it kind of was the shape of a moon. Not exactly, you know, but kind of. And then, um, all the ingredients reminded me of flowers, or like a whole bunch of flowers put together.
Yes. I think it's a very creative name that you came up with for your sandwich. And congratulations on that. Would you like to share anything else with us about the experience?
Uh, well, one thing, my grandma used to work at a flower shop, and she used the word floral a lot, so...
So it's kind of in the family, huh? Well, thank you, Erica. Congratulations, and thank you to the team at Sedexo. And we look forward to perhaps the next tasting a year from now. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tonight, we don't have any recognitions, and we do not have reports from our student representatives, so we will roll into the time where we have an opportunity to listen to our citizens speak. As has been in the past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes' time to speak in order for us to hear from our community and then get on to the, and then Barb will, I'm sorry, Barb will signal the speaker after approximately three minutes or two and a half minutes in order to allow a wrap-up of their comments. We expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, other behavior that will distract from that meeting, from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones at this time. Our first speaker tonight will be Charlie Becker. Will you please come up to the microphone? And we have Sue Baker on deck. Welcome, Charlie.
Good evening. It's a pleasure that the board gives the general public a chance to speak. I was at Mr. Como's meeting Monday night, and I'm sure that all you received communications from Carol Lombardi and myself. And I still oppose changing the name of Central Middle School to Les Paul, and for very good reason, because an individual that was a president, principal at Central Middle School years ago also was a founder of the, what, excuse me, was also the founder of the vocational school. And I feel that it'd be a shame to take that name away. And I realize it was changed before, but I still feel that way. I'm not anti Les Paul, because I worked on some of that stuff that had to come before the Common Council years ago and supported that stuff. But I feel that Mr. Worthington deserves to be named Central Middle School at the high school. And it's, I would also say that Waukesha High School is probably the oldest high school in Waukesha County. So that's my feeling. And the only other thing, what I wish your committee would have done is had a package deal with the naming and the cost all in one. And it could have presented the board, you could have presented the full board with this versus going back and discussing it and coming back again, and it would have been a complete deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Sue Baker, and then Carrie Schulte is on deck.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sue Baker. I'm the program director at the Les Paul Foundation and a very long-term resident of the city of Waukesha. I have worked, I worked many years as a volunteer in the school district and also worked a short time actually for the school district. I've always spent years with children and have observed that mostly children need to feel good about themselves. And we have a lot of kids that maybe don't feel so good about themselves and wonder if, gee, I'm too poor, or I'm, maybe I'm not attractive, or maybe I'm this, or maybe I'm that. And I think that if we can name Central Middle School Les Paul Middle School, we can use him as a role model. And the children who go to not only that school, but all the schools in our city can say, gee, there's a kid who grew up in a poor family. There's a kid who had just a mom. His parents were divorced. And look what he did. He went through my school. He walked the hallway that I walk. He performed on the stage in my school. And look who he became. Hmm, maybe I can be like Les Paul. And that's what I hope. I hope that we can use Les Paul to reinforce our students, to say, we do good things in the city of Waukesha, and we think you can be good too. So thank you for considering that.
Thank you. Carrie, and then Paul Reese is next. You're on deck?
I'll get this done in three minutes. Okay. My name's Carrie Schulte. I'm a mother of two daughters at Randallstem Academy. And I came tonight to voice my concern about the Common Core state standards. Common Core state standards seem to be quite the misnomer, considering that the word "state" is included in its name. These are not state standards at all. They are national standards funded by the Gate Foundation and Pearson. They're national standards that have been written by a select few, that have been pushed onto the states with race-to-the-top money and no child-left-behind waivers. The Common Core state standards were written and validated not by educators, but by those in the testing industry. Of the two education experts included in the validation committee, neither would sign off on the standards. Their comment was that the standards will put us at least two years behind other countries. No parents or teachers have been involved in any of this process. Jason Zimba, who wrote most of the math standards, has admitted that at the end of high school, students will be ready for the workplace or a two-year technical college at best. They will not be ready to pursue an education in a STEM career. In January, the New York Teachers Union withdrew support of Common Core and asked for the removal of the state's education commissioner. Only 30% of children in New York State passed the assessment. 3% of English language learners, 5% of children with disabilities, and less than 20% of African-American and Hispanics passed the test. The Chicago Teachers Union has also approved a resolution opposing Common Core and vowed to lobby the state school board to eliminate its use. The Chicago Teachers Union president, Karen Lewis, said, and I quote, "I agree with educators and parents from across the country. The Common Core mandate represents an overreach of federal power into personal privacy as well as into state educational autonomy. Common Core eliminates creativity in the classroom and impedes collaboration. We also know that high-stakes standardized testing is designed to rank and sort our children, and it contributes significantly to racial discrimination and the achievement gap among America's schools." Several clinical psychologists has come out to say that Common Core standards are not age-appropriate for young children. Mary, I'm probably gonna pronounce her name wrong, Komiya in New York, is one of these, and I urge you to look up her testimony on YouTube. What does this tell us? I would say it's time to get out. The standards are not tested, they are not world-class, and according to the creator of Common Core, David Coleman, it will take at least 10 years for us to find out if they will work.
Thirty seconds.
The New York State teachers were convinced that they would never have to teach to the test. They could keep teaching the way they are. Currently, in my daughter's school, the students are taught according to their ability, and I think that's wonderful. However, I ask what would happen here in Waukesha if only 30% of our children passed the assessment? Would we be forced to teach to the test? New York and Chicago are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Paul Reese?
I'm Paul Reese, of 841 Genesee Street. I was at FNF meeting Monday, and about Les Paul, Central Middle School becoming Les Paul. I went to Central Middle School. I know the Ed, Lincoln and Worthington buildings. I grew up in Waukesha. I looked on here to see if we had donations to our school district this month. I don't see any, but as long as I've been here, I know of none that Les Paul gave to the city. And my concern is, is Waukesha is becoming Waukesha of Les Paul, and everything around here is becoming Les Paul. And not saying, I'm not demeaning it, he was a great musician, and he did great attributes to the music industry, what he has done. I would have been one that Joe Como said, person that would have come up to him and said, hey, I agree with this, until I heard the opposite, you know, some opposing viewpoints, which changed my mind a bit on this. Superintendent Todd said that he had a committee, and all that committee was in favor of this. Yet, at the FNF meeting, they took a poll of the staff at Central, and it was 44 to 57. So apparently, it's possible to find people out there who disagree. And I would think that a committee of different viewpoints might add more insight to it. All this being said, I really believe that Shakespeare said, "What is in a name? You know, rose by any color be so sweet." It isn't, and I may be butchering that, but that's to the point. But I, Solomon called it chasing the wind. Naked a man comes into this world, and naked he departs. We can name it whatever. It will become rubble one day. I care about what's going on inside these schools. As Mr. Edlin testified, he talked about what this man accomplished as a high school dropout. When he dropped out of high school at 10th grade, 11th grade, whatever it was, 8th, 9th grade, he had a 9th grade education. Next month, we are gonna graduate people and give them a diploma that probably don't have an 8th grade education. And that is sad. It is a sad testimony to what's happened. And we talked, the lady before me talked about Common Core, which I wanted to point out, that those who broke this system, if they can't tell me how they broke it and what went wrong, how am I supposed to believe that they have the knowledge to fix it?
Thirty seconds.
I don't. It is, what is going on there inside those walls is what matters. What is outside of them will all come to pass. And we, it's just a shame that the education system has fallen apart as much as it has. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Those are all the people that have signed up prior to the meeting. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to step forward and address the committee at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our minute approval. There were several minutes for your consideration. April 9th, 2014 was a regular board meeting. May 7th, 2014 was a special, special meeting for reorganization. And I think those are the only, only two. Drive a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Barbara Brzync. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen Landel. Any comments or discussion, corrections? Okay, Sue, will you take the roll call vote?
Barbara Brzync?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery?
Aye.
Ellen Landel?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 8-0. Move on to the communications portion of our meeting. Mr. Gray, what?
I've got a number of letters and emails, and I have provided those to the board, and every one was in regards to either being in favor or being opposed to the naming of Central Middle School. And I think the board, especially the FNF committee, has seen those letters.
Okay, thank you. Bill, would you like to give our safety committee report next?
Safety committee met this morning. As we always do, we reviewed the accident reports for students and staff, and they were subsequently accepted. There was really nothing unusual to report. Positive note, there was a shorter list than we've had recently, so, of course, there's no ice out there to fall on either, so that helps, finally. Another item, as a result of some of the recent accidents we've had involving rollerblades, it is being considered the possibility of dropping this from our physical education program. This is still up, being discussed and considered. Request came from some of you to install swings at their playground. As the committee discussed this, none of our other schools currently have swings. We recognize that some properties that are nearby that are the city parks might have swings, but we have not endorsed swings in the past, and the committee does not feel they want to provide swings in this case either, out of concern for causing more accidents. And Glenn Norder reviewed some of the facility work that is planned for this summer, some of which comes out of providing a safe environment, and that concluded our meeting with the next one being scheduled for June.
Okay, thank you, Bill. And you might as well roll right into...
Right into our charter school.
Charter school report.
Excellent, good. You might hear in some of these items, continuing theme about the fact that more and more of this district is beginning to be noticed for some of the innovative things we're doing here. First one on the agenda here is Summit View hosted visitors from the middle of the state in the early stages of developing a new school concept there. Summit View staff and leaders worked with their staff during the part of the Wisconsin Innovative Schools Network Collaboration Day. Summit View has become a visitation school with WISN, that's what they refer to themselves as, not the television or radio station. And the final paperwork is being completed for Summit View Inc. to be a national partner with the Kennedy Center in Washington, DC. I don't know any more about what that means, but it can't be bad, so, good. STEM Saratoga is making adjustments to their daily schedule that will allow for more opportunity for staff to meet, to meet together, to collaborate, and will address the issue that has popped up regarding the assimilation of 6th graders into Saratoga's culture, which is significantly different than they had experienced previously in their home elementary schools. And that's an issue that has come up, and we're trying to deal with it. STEM combined, if you want to think of it that way, Chris and James successfully completed and submitted our dissemination grant application. Results and final decisions should be made by August. The grant was submitted on April 15th, and we're looking pretty solid with what we've submitted, the results, the data, the background partnerships that are already in place. This grant is needed, this grant is to show the need for more funds and how we can take our practices to the next level by disseminating them and to other ambitious educators across the state. The Engineering and Health Academy, on a combined basis, a couple reports, continue to be excited about some changes to both their classroom spaces this summer. The new innovative space will help students have places to learn and collaborate and create, all within a special setting that really makes it feel like they're engineering our health environments. And both schools are making progress, and the next steps for the development of the new governance boards and the future training will be take place, the Wisconsin Innovative Schools Network is providing on June 7th jointly with the STEM Board, a training for the governance boards. Sherry Jiminyani has tentatively arranged for Barry Golden from WISN to have the governing board training, and as I said, on June 7th. He will also do a walkthrough of our three academies before that time to familiarize himself with what happens in those academies. And just thank you to Cheryl for setting this up. The Engineering Academy was recognized by the Wisconsin Advanced Placement Advisory Council, WAPAC, as a pay-setter school in advanced placement. This is due to the fact of the large number of students who not only took the AP tests from that school, but also passed those tests. And finally, E-Achieve, at the CNI meeting last week, made a proposal to pilot a K-5 program for up to 50 students next year, and was given approval, and that is being forwarded to the full board for consideration this evening. And that concludes my charter school report.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments or questions for Bill on charter schools? We'll roll into our consent agenda next. Lori, were there any gifts received by any of the schools?
There were.
Sherry Jiminyani has tentatively arranged for Barry Golden from WISN to have the governing board training and as I said, on June seventh. He will also do a walkthrough of our three academies before that times to familiarize himself with what, what happens in those academies. And just thank you for, to Cheryl for setting this up. The Engineering Academy was recognized by the Wisconsin Advanced Placement Advisory Council, WAPAC, as a pay setter school in advanced placement. This is due to the fact of the large number of students who not only took the AP tests from that school, but also passed those tests. And finally, E-Achieve at the CNI meeting last week made a proposal to pilot a K through five program for up to fifty students next year and was given approval and that is being forwarded to the full board for consideration this evening. And that concludes my charter school report.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments or questions for Bill on charter schools? We'll roll into our consent agenda next. Lori, were there any gifts received by any of the schools?
There were, we have three gifts to report this evening. And they all benefited our tech ed departments at our high schools. A donation of tooling and metal stock with an estimated value of three thousand three hundred dollars was given to South High School by Generac Power Systems. This gift will be used for machine and metal fabrication programs at all three of our high schools. We also received various tools, mill cutters and taps with an estimated value of eight hundred dollars that was donated to South High School by Balix Inc. These will be used in the machine programs at South and North High Schools. And finally, we received a two thousand five Mazda tribute that was donated to North High School by David Cicero. The vehicle will be used by the students for their lab practice.
Okay, thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
There are a number of items in the consent agenda for your consideration for action. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate at this time. Okay, Steve, would you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of eight resignations, two retirements, one leave of absence, thirty-four contracts for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. The information was provided in your packet and an agenda was placed on your desks. I do have one note, it would be under new contracts and contract modifications, that Lauren Conlin has decided that she was going to take a position elsewhere. So that name should not be included in, in the new contracts and contract modifications in the document that was presented to you. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Baumgart? Any further discussion or questions? Sue, will you take a roll call vote?
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Barbara Zink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo?
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Now it's time for the superintendent's report, Mr. Gray.
Okay. Mr. Baumgart had talked about the charter school reports, I'm just going to let everyone know that next month in F and F, we will be bringing the STEM charter contract back as well as E-Achieve. Those are due. We want to get those in place. You know, we had a, a little bit of a scare this last spring with the state legislature proposing that we would have to eliminate any charter school that wasn't currently under contract. So we want to make sure that these, these two STEM, or these two charter school survive for the long term. So we're going to look at something like a fifty-year contract or, or maybe a multiple, I don't know. But we're going to, we're going to look at least five years on that because we want to make sure that those, those continue on. We've had great success with those. I was in Madison today, there's a renewed discussion on the school report card and I think everyone knows how I feel about that, not in what it reports, but what it doesn't report. And I think in terms of large school districts that, that offer a wide range of coursework for students tend to get penalized in that we're not recognized for the good work we're doing with the skills gap. We're not recognized for that the students would graduate. When you look at our DPI calculation of graduation rate, it's, it's a little below the state average. But the number of students that we really do graduate is far, far exceeds the state average. We have specialized students, we have ill-ow students that, that can't quite graduate within the four-year period. And DPI says if you're not within the four-year period, you, you don't get to be counted at the graduation rate. Well, that's, that's, I think, a little bit old fashioned. We know that, that some of our students come to us with different kinds of needs. Some come to us with no English speaking skills and we graduate those students with a, with a full diploma. It may take five years, it may take six years, but we do graduate them. And our actual graduation rate is, is over ninety percent, correct Jen?
Yeah, the stats were shared in the board report, it depends on what cohort you look at and if you're looking at direct pathways for diploma.
Right. Okay. Next Tuesday, Art in the Park, this is our four K program. I think you have a flyer at your desk.
No, in the packets.
In the packet, I'm sorry, in the packet, okay. But in any event, it's, it's Tuesday at five, from five-thirty to seven PM. We always pray for good weather, hopefully we'll have no rain. And again, I'll emphasize the, the bottom sentence here, register for summer reading program at the library, so. The high school art show at South High begins tonight. Once again, I mean, every year they continue to outdo themselves, it's just a wonderful art show. So if you have some time over the next few days, be sure to get over to South and take a look at the work. The, every, the ceramics, the photography, the drawings are absolutely fantastic. It's hard to believe that those are being done by high school students. A change in the volunteer recognition, it was supposed to be tonight, but we were planning on around forty people. We were up to close a hundred people who had signed up for it and there's no way we'd get a hundred people in room one oh nine. So we thought we better do this the right way and it'll be at Horning at seven PM on May twenty-eighth. And we'll be sending you, north, I'm sorry, north, I'm, I'm thinking of the, the shelf, at north, I'm sorry. And you'll be getting information on that in your, in your packets. But this is through the Interfaith Organization, they provide a lot of retired volunteers that come and work with our students in our district, in our, in our high need schools. You also probably saw via emails and the media that we've accomplished the fundraising for our three synthetic turf fields. And I just want to thank the community for stepping up. We had a very, very short timeline on that, but, but people came through and people were, were very, very generous to the point that we actually have a few dollars over, so if there's any contingencies, we are set. But again, thanks to everyone and thanks to the, the board for giving us the time to get that in place. And finally, I just want to quickly discuss, I've, I've had a lot of questions on the process for school naming. We have a specific board policy that lays out steps that we use anytime someone is requesting to name a new building or an existing building. We follow that, that policy. There were actually three committees, there was a, a citizen staff committee that I convened, which Mrs. Landl participated in. There was also a parent staff committee at Central, which Mr. Bennett managed. And then there was also the staff itself. So there were really technically three different committees that looked at this and you, and you've, you've seen the, the recommendations and so forth. So I won't, I won't go into that, but we, we did follow that policy very closely and, and over, had some overkill in some, some areas because this is a, a big deal for the community. And that's my report.
Thank you, Todd. The groundbreaking for the first field is when?
It will be south because that does not interfere with the track, that's separate from the track. And I, I was thinking May, mid-May, but it may depend on how soggy things are, so.
Sure, sure. Mr. Baumgart?
There's another element there, we are still waiting for the approval of the permits from the city.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
So.
And I'm sure there's a few of those.
Well, yeah, and if, if we can get the city and, and if the ground isn't too wet, we would start this weekend.
Okay.
But there's two ifs there.
Yeah. The, the, the weather is going to play a big, big factor in that, so we don't destroy other, other parts of the field and the grounds going into it.
Todd, are we pretty sure that the fields will be done in time for August football practice?
It all depends on what kind of summer we have.
Okay.
If it's, if it's-
But that's our goal.
If it's a dry summer, yes.
The target date.
Yeah. If it's, if it's not, you know, that things could be held up. But I think we're pretty confident that it will be done. By the way, this is only one half of the, the project. Carroll University is doing two fields and Catholic Memorial is doing a field. So we're going to have six synthetic turfs within about a two square mile radius. So that's, that's pretty good for this community.
I'd like to see it done in time for football practice because it is different to play on turf than it is on grass. And so I would like the kids to be prepared when the season starts to play on that turf.
Right. Like I said, if we, if the, the forecast for the summer is supposed to be dry, maybe not drought, but dry, and if it is, then we're in good shape.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Now we're at the point in our meeting where we have our committee reports. The first committee this evening is the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. And that report is presented by Barbara Zink.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last curriculum and instruction meeting was held on Tuesday, May sixth, at six o'clock PM. First action item that we discussed was the approval of E-Achieve Grade Five Pilot. Rick Nettesheim, principal, and his team returned to the curriculum instruction meeting seeking approval for the E-Achieve Grade Kindergarten through five pilot beginning in the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. Principal Nettesheim followed up on the request that was made to see the results of studies relating to the socialization and collaboration skills of students who work alone compared to those attending traditional schools. When no such studies were found, he conducted his own survey and shared those results with us. And I must say, I took a while to read those today, Mr. Nettesheim. And the people that send their children to R-E-Achieve were very, very pleased that the socialization for their children was what they wanted and adequate for their children. But of course, there were a few people that said, mm, I think my child could have a little bit more socialization. But it was really more in favor of what was going on at this time. So thank you for that, that was some very, very interesting information. Approving this addition to E-Achieve would provide Waukesha families their own virtual school. This option is perfect for school district of Waukesha residents who may already be open enrollment outside of our district, residents who are currently choosing to homeschool, or are students that require homebound services. Mr. Nettesheim also shared with the committee that the E-Achieve budget could absorb all costs other than the two point zero FTEs Superintendent Gray shared with the committee and that the cost of the FTEs would be awash with the funds that will return to the district via the state open enrollment program. On a vote of five to zero, the curriculum and instruction committee moved to approve the E-Achieve Grade K to five elementary pilot program, up to fifty students for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year, with an evaluation at year end to determine if the program was successful enough to seek action for final implementation for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. We now have Chris's board approval and I so move.
Is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Baumgart? Comments and discussion? Mrs. Langill?
I voted for this and I will again, though I, I know I had a number of questions at the time. The one thing I would add, and I don't think we need to put it in the motion, but I guess because it came up at CNI and because I, you know, haven't seen anything yet, is when we'll see the criteria and benchmarks for the year-end evaluation, since this is a pilot. And I don't know when, we didn't put a date, but I kind of had hoped to start seeing something already and we haven't seen anything.
Well, I mean, there's nothing to, to evaluate, but I mean, I-
I'm talking about the benchmarks to evaluate, the criteria to evaluate.
I mean, I, I would, I would envision that we would probably do one at the first trimester, the second, I mean, so that you have that information.
No, I understand that, but could we please see the criteria?
Right.
That's what I'm asking for.
I'm expecting that'll be delivered at the next CNI meeting.
Oh, you think June CNI will-
I, I don't know why, that would certainly be reasonable.
Okay, well, that's, I still have that question.
But as far as evaluation periods, they will be multiple times.
No, I understand that, okay.
I guess, oh, go ahead.
I was going to ask Mr. Kron, did you have your hand up on that?
Just gave a thumbs up.
Okay.
But we would probably, we would use the same criteria. We're talking about a group of elementary students and we'd compare them to their counterparts in our system and we'd look at typical map data. And we could put some other measures in in terms of student satisfaction, connectedness, especially this, one of the main questions was the delivery model, significantly different, requires some, some parent connections and that was an issue discussed over the last two meetings, is the role of the families taking on this piece. And so I think that would be part of the, the piece as well that we could easily pull and try to monitor. But I can put a package together for our June meeting with some, at least an outline of what we can do to evaluate.
That would be great.
I do remember that discussion, Ellen, and thank you for bringing that up. But I thought I heard that the benchmarks in the curriculum, et cetera, would be identical to that which we have in our brick and mortar schools.
I can't believe they'd be the same because we're evaluating a very different program. So that's where my question came from. Because we're looking at all kinds of issues like parent involvement, five, six hours at home. We're looking at the socialization issue.
Yes, oh, yes.
All kinds of things. So I mean, I think we do need to see a different set of criteria.
Okay.
I mean, as well as the typical, but.
I'll ask, I see Mr. Nettesheim is in our, our audience. Would you, would you like to step forward and just say something on, on the benchmarks, Mr. Nettesheim? Put us all at ease, if possible?
Sure. Yeah, we, we will be using the same criteria so we can present those at the next meeting.
And when you say the same, you mean for the high school?
No, for what's used in the elementaries and the rest of the district.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, we need something besides that.
Additional.
Yeah.
Well, we, we can, we can bring forth criteria.
Yeah, that's what I'd love to see.
Okay, we will.
And these would be specific to K-five virtual, K-five EE.
Yes.
Not just K-five bricks, because that's very different.
Yes, we'll, we'll bring forth the criteria.
Very good, that's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick, thank you, Ellen. Okay.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the E-Achieve Grade K-five elementary pilot program, which will be up to fifty students for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year, with an evaluation at the end of the year to determine if the program was successful enough to seek action for the final implementation of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. Sue, will you take the roll on this?
Patrick McCaffery?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Zink?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo?
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. And I have a correction, and those previous votes were seven zero. I, I counted incorrectly, so I guess I got to go back to Waukesha South and-
No, no, kindergarten.
It's written down, good.
Barb?
Okay, we have another action item, approval of elementary school and high school start and end times. In March two thousand fourteen, Superintendent Gray began discussions in regards to adding an initial, an additional fifteen minutes to the end of the elementary school day. Adding fifteen minutes to the elementary day would add forty-four hours of additional instructional time per school year. Additionally, due to transportation constraints, it would be necessary to delay the high school start time. The high school day would begin at seven forty AM. Delaying the high school start time would also push the academic options time to later in the morning, providing additional educational opportunities for all high school students. Over the past two months, elementary principals have used various venues to convey this information to their families, such as letters, newsletters, email, telephone calls, PTO, PTA meetings, and family nights to mention a few. The superintendent's office had to respond to approximately one dozen concerns that were received. On a vote of five zero, the curriculum and instruction committee moved to approve the addition of fifteen instructional minutes to the elementary school day, which includes the change in the high school schedule. We now request board approval and I so move.
Is there a second to that? Mr. Baumgart? He beat you to the punch, Pat.
He did.
Comments, questions?
No, you can have it.
Mrs. Reinacek?
Can we talk about some of the concerns, what, what were-
Primarily, what, why do we need fifteen more minutes? And that was before I think people understood that, that we had released some amount of instructional time in the county. Typically, when I explained that, the other was, what are you going to do with fifteen minutes? Well, there's a lot of things that were, that were expressed by the teachers and by the principals that they could do with that. You know, Mr. Kron has said that if, if they did four days a week, if they did fifteen minutes of math facts, which is, is always good, you can never do too much of that, that would give forty-four hours of math, additional hours of math facts, that's one example. Other schools said, boy, we would like to add fifteen minutes to maybe the reading time or the math time four days a week and then have an hour on Friday to do some, some enrichment type programs or some other types of educational programs. So there's a lot of, of good ideas on how to use this, we want to make sure it's used wisely. Some schools have, have, have literally lost their lunchtime and their, their, their playground time because of the, the curriculum requirements we have. Some of that can be brought back, but each, you know, we're going to- Some of that can be brought back, but each, you know, we're gonna let each school tell us how they're gonna use it, make sure it's used wisely. But some of the other concerns were, you know, getting out at 15 minutes later might hinder people getting to events after school, dance, and so on, but we know other schools in the area do it. You know, I think Pewaki, Muskego are two that Elbrook get out as later, later, and it works for them. So, it's only 15 minutes, it doesn't sound like a lot, but I think added up over the year, it will make a difference. And then the other piece of that is, starting high school at 7:40 versus 7:20, you know, I would've liked to start high school at 8:40, based on the research. That's not gonna happen this time, it may down the road. But the issues there were getting kids to school at that particular time, and I don't know what difference 20 minutes makes. And the other side of it was, kids who have jobs will get there 10, 15 minutes later. But again, that can be worked out. We have co-op and job release times at our high schools and Lewis Study Hall. So, I don't see there being anything that is insurmountable in terms of the concerns. But it does give us a lot of options, both at the elementary school. It also helps, you know, it does start high school a little later, you know, I have buses going through my neighborhood at 6:20 a.m., and that's just too early. It helps a little bit. It also gives the school some, an opportunity to look at putting academic options maybe after first hour, second hour. I don't know if they'll be ready to do that next year, but certainly a year out, you know, we had committed to the board that each and every student would be engaged during that AO time, and if you don't have to come right now, you get to sleep in, which is a nice option. Unfortunately, some kids who need to come are also taking the sleep-in option, and that doesn't work either. So, I think it could provide the high school a little bit more uniform schedule, and those concerns about it, about the timing, hopefully will be minimized when you see the value of what we can do with this.
Is there any other questions about that?
Mrs. Langill.
Good. I mentioned this at the meeting, and it's a concern I still have. I'll vote for this, but I also think, and I mentioned this, Todd, that the principals did respond, that they got the word out, and some of them said they heard 10 responses or, you know, whatever.
Right.
And some of them said they discussed it at a PTA meeting, and that's great, but what I didn't see here was a list of concerns from the parents, and maybe we're implying here that there weren't none, but I find that hard to believe.
Again, there were some that were very similar. I think the principals handled some of those, explained the issues, and, you know, it was in the paper twice, and we got very, very few calls in my office. Usually-
That's good.
Question, was more questions than it was concern, so.
Okay, okay. And, I mean, I think it's certainly worth a try, and I know you probably don't like it phrased that way, but I still am concerned about the kids, and I know I looked at the other schools, getting home, you know, after dark, and these are the little kids. So, I think we have to be prepared for when reality hits and winter comes, the parents who maybe thought, well, this sounds fine, might not think it's so fine, so I think we have to be maybe a little ready for that, because-
Well, and we can look at routes and so on, and if we have some long routes, we're gonna maybe have to split those up into some different routes, or revise those, so that if students are on the bus 40 minutes, yeah, that could be a late in arrival time.
Right, and I appreciate that, so that's why I wanted to raise that concern. And then, lastly, I have no doubt that our teachers can use the extra 15 minutes. I mean, I think they'll use it productively, and I trust them on that one. So, that's a positive. I just remain concerned, as I had said before, and I think if we're sensitive to that going forward, that will really be a good idea, to keep our ears open on that, so, that's all.
Yeah, the shocking statistic for me was, McQuanago had 13 days more instruction than we had at the elementary level, right now. 13 days, that was the-
The equivalent, right, right.
That's a lot of face time with our students. By adding the 15 minutes to our elementary schedule, we're gaining about six days of instructional time. And so, that will put us roughly in the middle of the pack with the rest of the Waukesha County schools.
And with the change in the law, and from days to minutes, you know, this year, we had the cold days, and we had to bring students back on March 6th and 7th, when they should have been off. That made a long stretch, and it was, it made, to me, a very, very rough winter, both in terms of parent issues, student issues, teacher issues, and so, with this kind of flexibility, we can look at those types of days, and, you know, maybe we would've had to use one day, but not both, and then people could've gotten a little bit of a break in there. I know we had a number of parents who had to cancel events and plans because of that, and this would allow us to work around that.
Todd, could you possibly give us an early report, at least by the end of the first quarter, when the days do get shorter and it becomes obvious that it's dark by 4:30, to let us know about how the new schedule is working with getting the younger children home?
We'll probably have a report the first couple of weeks once we have the new routes in place.
That'll be great.
And then you'll be able to get an idea-
Right.
-what time those students are getting home, and we can look at.
You're right.
I'd rather forecast that early-
Yes.
-than wait till the, you know, that it gets dark, and then we've got a problem. So, we'd probably get that information to you early.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I do have one other question.
Ms. Langill.
I just remembered, I got a phone call, and I said I would bring it forward. Can you just say, for the people who either are watching or somebody calls me, why we didn't decide to do it at 8:25 and then 3:25? In other words, why we didn't pick up the 15 minutes? That was her question. On the beginning of the day at the elementary?
Transportation.
So, it's all a busing thing?
Yes, and, you know, our busing budget is in the $6 million range, so a minor change like this, while it looks minor, would've been pretty drastic financial implication.
Okay, because that was a phone call.
Yeah, and I'll be honest, I've had many, many parents in my parent advisory say, why don't you flip-flop the elementary and high school start time? And I know some districts have done that around the state, and typically, I get comments that, from many parents, that, you know, with our current start time for elementary, they're missing an hour of work. And so, we also know that elementary kids do a little bit better earlier in the morning, whereas high school students, if you've ever been in a first-hour class, often it's pretty quiet. But, you know, that, so, that's something we, my parent advisory asked me to explore in future years, should we just flip those times? The only issue we have is the release time for high school with athletics, and, you know, that is important. It may not be as important as academics, but it is an important factor.
And we still face the darkness factor in the morning-
Right, right.
-because it's really not light until about 7:20, 7:30-
Right, right.
-in the middle of winter, so.
Mr. Edlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not all schools in our community are gonna wanna follow this schedule, and they do receive state-funded busing. And there were concerns expressed to me by the Prokeo School with the church I'm affiliated with, that the busing is gonna be an issue with the new times that we're gonna be implementing.
Again, other than the high school, the start times are all the same, and I don't know if this is a high school-
No, it's elementary school.
The elementary start time does not change. It's just you got 15 minutes later.
But they're included in the route for the high school busing?
Okay.
And?
It would be, yeah, it'd be 20, 20 minutes. But it still wouldn't be as late as our elementary start times.
Yeah. But are they just gonna be told tough luck?
We'll try to work with them if we can. I mean, there's other buses other than high school. There's, you know, if we can make something work, we'll make it work.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions and comments? Okay, so, the motion on the floor is to approve the additional, addition of 15 instructional minutes to the elementary school day, which also includes the change in our high school schedule. Sue, will you take the roll call?
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo.
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Barb?
Okay, we have one information item. It relates to the Infinite Campus transition. The school district of Waukesha will adopt Infinite Campus for the 2014-2015 school year. Assistant Superintendent Ryan Kron walked through both the system alignment and program training that Infinite Campus brings. Infinite Campus presents some new options for reporting grades that both grading for learning and our personalized learning vision. I will turn the floor over to Mr. Kron, and he will share the Infinite Campus presentation with you this evening. Mr. Kron.
Good evening. We just had three quick slides. Seeing as this covers not just CNI, but a lot of other departments, this training is pretty intense. It will impact every student, every teacher, every classroom, and every family that's a part of our school district in a variety of different ways. So, real quickly, and we just have three or four screenshots of what this is, wanted to make sure, we've talked about it in different committees, but we wanted to make sure that it came in front of us, so we're aware of this change. Currently, every school, every assistant, every secretary, every office is being trained in this, and we're expecting a significant amount of transition, we call it just transitional learning, taking place for our community this upcoming fall, as new families are registering. So, we're gonna do our best to make sure the lines are established quickly. We have sort of that first initial transition to get over. And then, secondly, with this, it does open the doors for new methods of communication, communication between teachers and parents, communication between classroom ability, as well as even in grades and reporting. So, we don't have anything major changing in those arenas yet, but the tool and the device, or the new system, does allow new options in the future. So, sort of being aware that Phase One is putting this into place, and our system is gonna happen, but we're gonna hear a lot more about Infinite Campus in the next year in a variety of ways, from everything in, from registering, and families paying, and becoming a part of the school and school district, but also to eventually to how it's working in the classroom with teachers and parents connecting, and then finally to how we're able to monitor progress for kids and their reporting, their progress. So, here's a typical screenshot, Infinite Campus is being used in a number of school districts local to us, everything from Iguanago to New Berlin, and being used by more and more every day as a part of the statewide transition. The next slide is just kind of talking about why Infinite Campus. There was a large statewide debate between Skyward, Infinite Campus, and our current, even our current system, which we've been sort of piecing together, it's no longer in service, but we've been making it fit here over the last couple of years. So, we'll see that it replaces Zangle, which is technically obsolete right now, and it no longer in service, and other pieces. So, it's a pretty major overhaul in our system, if we can go to the next slide. There, it is, it does update, and sort of a clean house of all information systems. There are still some things that we have to look at, how are they a part of there? Doesn't cover absolutely everything, but it does start to link everything from lunch to grades, to parent contacts and communication. So, the bullet three there, which talks about better alignment to grading for learning, best practice, that's a conversation that'll take place in the future, next year. Really, it does have some features for how students and families can report grades, and how teachers can report them, and how people can view them and see them, which we've got a lot more conversation on, nothing changing in that realm yet, but really, it just has some other doors that can open. And again, the immediate access to up-to-date information, that's a conversation that we have to start, to really find that balance between what does up-to-date mean? Does that mean the second a test is complete, or does that mean at the end of the week? Or, really, we want students to be in the know, and we want families to be able to have the information that they need to support their child's learning, or to be able to communicate and support what's happening in this school, so. And the last slide, quickly, is just talking about what benefit we think that parents will have. They'll have one, you know, if anything in this world, we all have too many passwords to get into information now, so this does, I think, eliminate one or two of their passwords they have for other systems, and families will have one to see students' grades, lunch balances, schedules, attendance, and things like that. So, hopefully, they'll have one go-to spot for all of that information. So, really, just with tonight, and I think that's it for the slides, and the last one.
Before you get rid of them, can I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
I think it was three slides back, I don't know if that's your-
(laughing).
Well, I didn't wanna interrupt you at that time.
(laughing).
No, one more back. Okay, oh, it's white and green. But where it says welcome blah blah, and then says you can call the help desk, is that gonna be a local number ultimately, for our parents and teachers? Because, I mean, obviously, that doesn't look like a very good number.
Yeah, I hope, yeah, that's a great number.
That's not a real number.
What, really, what, I think what I opened with, and really, maybe what I'll close with, is we are going through a pretty extensive training process, and I would expect that the local number would be this number you'd call at school.
Okay.
Just regular classroom call, stop in at the school and the office, but I know-
Our help does, we have the help ticketing system and the technology there.
Okay, well, that'll be good, because people will need it, I'm sure. Okay, thank you.
Our quick update under CNI was really just this topic, but it is a major transition for our district, and it affects sort of every single building, every student, every family. Reason we brought it up there was just so that we're all aware that this is happening live right now, there's been extensive training, day in and day out here in this building, and we assume that it's gonna continue over the summer, and we assume registration's gonna feel a little bit different, but we're excited about what can happen with it.
So, Ryan, it's really a database bank on students.
Yeah, which we have now in Zangle, but families are logging into Parent Connect to see things for grades, and they're logging in, so this is hopefully a one-stop shop, like a mega mall, or-
Yeah, it takes the place of a number system that are converged together into one now, so.
Right, and the old teacher grade books, you know, that you never really, you know, entered into any data, or all we had was report cards. This'll really be more accurate and up-to-date. Ryan, how long do we keep student data in our data systems after they graduate? I received a question on that, and I guess I thought we always kept it forever.
There's different rules for different sets of records, and actual hard copies of files, it seems funny, but we actually manage that from our office, and we notify them when they turn 21 for some of their files, and call them and say, do you wanna come pick up your file and your record?
Okay.
If they're aging out. So, it depends on what that record is and how that's utilized. Again, what's active, what's not active, and what gets archived through technology for other purposes, or reported up to other links. So, there's different nuances, I can put something together for you, in your board packet, so you can see that and better answer that.
Mr. Gray?
There's a DPI records retention guide that we follow.
Okay.
Actually, you could just print that off, and that's what we follow. It's different, different things have different years.
Because sometimes employers, you know, want that data, and if the high school doesn't house it, you know, where is it?
Yeah, we often get inquiries from what happened back in 1945.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
You know, I mean, we'll get, and then, of course, we don't have that, but we've had to go back 30 years, and Sue has all the yearbooks in her office, and sometimes we've had to go back and into the 60s and so on, and look for information.
1913.
What was the last one?
1913.
Right, right.
Family history.
So, we like to keep as much as we can, but obviously, it's cumbersome, and if it's hard copy, it just, we just run out of space, so.
I guess, lastly, the one thing that's changed the most with the grading and the access is, in the last five, 10 years, is students and families have live access to the grade book. So, that book that used to look red, and you would see maybe during conferences, or if you got a phone call or stopped in, is now live, 24/7 for families. That's the way it is now, that's the way it will be in the future, but that really does change the game for the role of the student and the family, of having ongoing, the ability to ongoing look at, see how progress was on a recent quiz, on an assignment, on a test, and so, that's been new to our system in the last few years, and I think we're finding a nice balance in how do we respond to things that we see, how do students advocate for themselves, and really are in the know of that, so not taking some of the surprises away, and allowed students to advocate for their need at times like AO or other places, when they can see what they can do to improve on a spot.
Sounds like the information will be more thorough. You'd hope. Okay, anything else, Ryan? Okay. Okay, we have no discussion items, Mr. President, so thank you. This concludes the Curriculum and Instruction Committee report for May. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 3, 2014, 6 o'clock PM, right here. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. Our next committee is the Policy Committee, and that will be presented by... You're correct. You're correct. Thank you, Bill. It'll be the HR Committee, presented by Mr. Edlund.
I had my script ready and waiting.
Steve?
Buzzed right over me. That's all right.
Thank you for giving me a little bit of break on my first night here, you guys. I'm flipping through, I'm flipping through the papers, and I apologize.
No problem, thank you.
That's okay.
We have two action items tonight. Item 5A1, approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Assistant Principal of South High School. The administration is recommending Stephanie Blue for the position of Assistant Principal of South High School. Ms. Blue has the talent to get teachers and students excited about trying new ideas and working together. She has a very open and transparent communication style that allows her to be a trusted leader who earns the respect and motivation of those around her. Stephanie Blue has been the 6th through 12th grade Humanities Coordinator for the School District of Waukesha since 2012. Prior to that, Stephanie was an English teacher at New Berlin Eisenhower School. She received her Bachelor of Science from Wortburg College in Iowa, and her Master of Science in Curriculum and Instruction from UW-Whitewater. She's completing her administration program and earning a second master's degree from Marion University in May of 2014. A confidential recommendation and resume were included in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Stephanie Blue for the position of Assistant Principal of South High School.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brusink. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, I would make a positive comment about Stephanie. I met with her shortly after she joined the district, a year and a half, 18 months ago or so, and already at the time, she said she feels slightly entirely re-energized by joining our district and the role of the Humanities Coordinator that she was doing. And she has shown that by doing, in my mind, exemplary work with something that really needed to have some work done on it. And it's going to be, of course, it's bittersweet in that she's going to be moving to a different position, and she's excited about it. Talked to her again today, she's excited about it, and knows that she's left a lot of good work here, and is ready to take on her next challenge. So, I'm, I'm very excited for her.
Yep, she's had a huge impact on secondary literacy, and, and I really am sorry to lose her from this particular position, but it is an opportunity for her, and of course, we would never stand her away on that. Plus, she's still in the district, so we still have access to her expertise in that area. But she's done a nice job with our, our English, high school English program, as well as our high school history program.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, will you call the roll on this?
Karen Reinacek.
Hi.
Ellen Langel.
Hi.
Patricia Madden.
Hi.
William Baumgart.
Hi.
Barbara Brusink.
Hi.
Patrick McCaffery.
Hi.
Steve Edlund.
Hi.
Joseph Como.
Hi. Passes eight zero. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to pause here for just a second. We use a modified Robert's Rules of Order, and I need some parliamentary guidance on this issue, so I'm going to defer this to our experts in this area. The second item failed for a lack of a second on the motion, and this is a recommendation by the administration, so I am not sure if we're allowed to bring this forward, or if it comes before the Board without recommendation for the committee.
The second.
I think it's the second, yes.
The second, okay.
So...
Then we'll proceed with the recommendation from, from the administration.
Okay. I'm going to ask Chris what the recommendation is at this time for that particular item. And actually, I'll, I'll take that back. Steve, why don't you, why don't you read the recommendation, and then what we'll do is we will put it out to the floor to see if someone makes that motion, and see if we get a second. Let's do that.
Okay. The administration is recommending Heidi Williams for the position of Principal of Higher Elementary School. Ms. Williams' talents lie in her ability to work with students, as well as adult learners. Her knowledge of how to use data to move students forward, as well as her ability to develop rapport with other, with others, makes her a recognized leader among her colleagues. She has expertise in interventions, as well as incorporating technology into instruction. Ms. Williams is currently the Principal of Wayne Elementary, and the 6th through 12th Intervention Coach, and K-12 Gifted and Talented Coordinator at the Kwaskum School District. Heidi Williams received her Master of Science degree in Curriculum and Instruction in 2006 from Walden University, and her Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education with a minor in Spanish in 1989 from UW-Plattville. A confidential recommendation, excuse me, a confidential recommendation and resume were distributed earlier this week. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policy.
Okay, so that, that is the recommendation. I'm going to turn to Pat Madden and ask her if...
If you get a second to that, administration should just bring it to the Board.
Okay.
Because they got no second in their committee, and the administration can bring anything to the Board with it.
Okay, so, so I would have been better off asking Chris to read the, I apologize. So, should we, I will just ask Chris, is that the admin, is that the administration's recommendation that you wanted to bring forward?
The administration indeed recommends that the Board approve the contract for Heidi Williams.
Okay.
Point of order, can I just, and I know we can look at the precedents on this Board, but certainly, the Personnel, HR Committee has open meetings. We believe in open meetings. But also, personnel discussions sometimes are a little sensitive, and this meeting is televised, and I'm just saying we ought to know that going forward. If we're going to engage in a discussion of the suitability of personnel, we better do it with our eyes open. If we, if we think we can do that, then, then fine, but I just think we better be careful.
Okay, so we do have an administrative recommendation, and at this time, I would be looking to see if anyone on the Board would like to make that motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the recommendation made by administration.
Second by Pat Madden. Further, I guess cautionary discussion would be maybe the way to go, further discussion on this? Mrs. Brusink?
To my knowledge, and many, many years I've been on the Board, this has never happened, so there must be some concerns of some kind, so it's, you know, of interest to me. If, if my vote, you know, goes forward to approve this, that it's certainly somebody that the Board in general approves of, because that's part of our job.
I'm looking at our agenda, and I'm not sure, we're not scheduled for any closed sessions, and there's no way that we could take this into closed session.
Mr. Edlund is...
Could we maybe just explain the meeting?
Yeah.
Sure.
At the Human Resources Committee meeting, excuse me, earlier this evening, we had a quorum of two of the three members. One of the members was absent. One of the members expressed a concern about the recommendation. The other member was fine with the recommendation.
Okay, so that's why I didn't come forward, then?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Baumgart?
My comments would be along this line. We've, we have regularly had a rather intense way of vetting candidates for jobs through our Human Resources Department, the processes that they follow to get somebody to this point. They have a record, a track record of being very successful in identifying people. Yes, occasionally, somebody doesn't work out, that, that's not unheard of, but none of us know all the details, other than what we have in front of us on her resume and on the recommendation as it came forward. I, I am not ready to second-guess that. I think what I have heard from administration, and knowing the, the way they process applicants, the way they screen them, the way they go through the interviews, reference checking and everything else, at this point, I'm, I'm very comfortable with this.
Dr. Langel?
Thank you, Mr. Como. I have to, I mean, obviously confess, I was the one that knew I couldn't make the meeting, and I did call and say I couldn't get here in time, and I didn't, so my apologies for that. But I wondered if within the scope of our committee meetings, if someone has a sincere concern, and since I wasn't there, I don't know who or what, they could certainly ask staff to go back and look at Issue 1, 2, or 3, if those exist. But that didn't happen, there wasn't any suggestion in the HR meeting to go back and look at some concern?
Mrs. Headstrom?
The meeting was an open meeting. Mr., Mr. Edlund made a motion, and Mrs. Reinacek expressed a concern, but did not share what that concern was.
Okay, but obviously, within the committee, if committee member A or B had a concern that they wanted you to recheck, they could have said, "Let's postpone it and have you recheck it," but that didn't happen, is what you're saying?
Because I don't know what the concern was.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying that's because it didn't happen.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Edlund?
Yes, there, there was no discussion on the item, because there was not a second on the motion, so therefore, no discussion took place.
Okay. Going, going back to the process that we go through to hire people for these positions, Chris, could you give us a sense of the number of candidates, and how many resumes were received, how many interviews were made? Could you give us those statistics, please?
Yes, yes, I can. The, the process for filling the position of Principal of Higher Elementary School began when the position was posted on March 19, 2014. It closed on April 28, 2014. All applicants were reviewed and were given the opportunity to complete the online Principal Insight interview. We had 131 applicants, 108 completed the Principal Insight. Screening interviews with central office staff and school administration were completed using our digital interview process. Of the 13 applicants invited, two withdrew, and 11 completed the interview and were evaluated. As a result, three candidates were invited to the site for interviews. One of the three withdrew prior to site interviews. The site team at Higher Elementary School was composed of four administrators, six teachers, support staff, parents, and students. And upon completion of the site interviews, each site team member participated in a discernment process of the candidates they interviewed. Based on the individual and composite team feedback, and on follow-up with candidates, this site recommended to Human Resources the preferred candidate, Heidi Williams.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So, we went through the, the normal process that we typically go through, as Bill was pointing out, to hire principals, or to make a recommendation. Okay. Mrs. Brusink?
You know, I know that when you, when, from, from past experience as an administrator, when candidates are brought before staff, I mean, to me, that's one of the toughest parts of the whole interview, because it's their building, and they know what they want, what they need, et cetera. So, if the staff, was it a unanimous vote on behalf of the staff? Do you recall?
Yes, I do recall, and it was.
See, and that tells me if the staff unanimously selected this person, then this is the person they feel they want to be their leader, they will support, and this person will obviously fulfill the needs that they have.
Our further process included checking references, and also Heidi Williams came and spent a half-day in our school district and visiting the various classrooms in the school on Monday morning. So, I didn't, so that was, it was a pretty intense and careful process.
Well, and it's a process that involves different groups of people, so it isn't just you, it isn't just administration, but it involves central office administrations, principals, teachers. So, that, that's a pretty well-rounded group of people to make a decision. I'm very comfortable with that.
Mrs. Langel?
Sorry, but one real quick sort of point of order. And Mr. Edlund, I understand, obviously, and feel guilty I wasn't there, however, with CNI, and I think with most of our committee structure, and Pat, you've seen this in the past, too, we usually do a kind of discussion, and then if that culminates in a motion, then that's fine, and if there's a second or not, that obviously then is, is germane. But usually, you don't need, I mean, just in the future, I don't think we need to cut off discussion if there isn't a motion and a second.
Right.
And so, just going forward, that might be something to...
I agree.
Consider, but it doesn't, I mean, tonight, it's moot. But do you understand what I'm saying? Okay.
And Ellen, if I, if I can add to that, you know, otherwise, a committee of, you know, like, two people tonight can make a decision for the whole Board, and that makes me uncomfortable, because that is not, I guess, the intent of the committees.
All right. I think it's time to take the vote. The motion that's on the floor right now is to approve the recommendation of Heidi Williams to be Principal at Higher Elementary School. Will you take that rule-call vote?
Patricia Madden.
Hi.
Barbara Brusink.
Hi.
William Baumgart.
Hi.
Steve Edlund.
Hi.
Patrick McCaffery.
Hi.
Karen Reinacek.
No.
Ellen Langel.
Hi.
Joseph Como.
Hi. It passes seven one, Sue?
Yes.
And Pat, thank you for your expertise in the parliamentary process. Yeah, it's, I'm not familiar with all of Robert's rules, and so I appreciate you clarifying that, and I will probably be turning to you in the future also.
Well, Ellen Langel's just very capable, too.
Thank you, thank you.
Just real quickly, I just wanted to thank Chris Headstrom for the wonderful presentations and recognitions at the banquet last week sometime, I forgot what night. It's all, this time of year, was it?
It was very clever.
No, it was such a very nice event, and thank you, Chris, and great to visit with the teachers, and your Latin was actually very good, too.
And I'd like to add, if I may, Mr. President, thank you, Bill. You gave a very nice, some very nice words of welcome and appreciation and thanks and acknowledgement for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for that. Mr. Edlund?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess what I drew from this tonight, given that the circumstances were highly unusual, and I think this is a good reminder to myself, and maybe to my fellow Board members, that when an issue of concern, particularly a sensitive issue, comes up, and a Board member has concern, that we call the appropriate administrator to get some background information, to make sure that we're fully informed, and to express any concerns that they might not know about, or have, or haven't heard from the community, and make an informed vote from that conversation. They may have insight on something you may not know about, and you may not, you may have insight on something they may not know about.
You mean the administration?
When a Board member has concerns, they should be contacting somebody in the administration to get as much information as possible before, to be able to make an informed vote.
But I would think with having Chris Headstrom, who is our, you know, a top administrator, that she would be able to answer any questions or concerns.
That is my point.
It's a good recommendation, Steve, to remind us all that at any time, we can really call our administrators for any reason to get additional information. That's why they're here, actually, to help us get as informed as possible, so that when we vote on these important issues, we have as much information as we possibly can get to determine which way we, we would like to vote.
Yep. That would be very, very helpful, especially, you know, calling beforehand, especially in areas that, that maybe aren't, aren't appropriate for a public discussion. And again, right, you do, you do have information on some things that we don't sometimes, and that's very helpful to know that. And if there's an issue, we can then delay it, revise the agenda, whatever it takes, you know, if we know that information early enough.
That doesn't mean that Board members are calling to, you know, avoid things being public in a meeting, because that's not at all how we conduct our business.
No, no, no.
What I'm saying is that whether you agree or disagree with the administration, sometimes it's good that they hear your viewpoint, and you hear their viewpoint.
But there are some things that we, we simply, personnel issues we cannot discuss publicly, and if there's an issue with that, that's good to know that in advance.
Yeah, I'm speaking in general terms for the conduct. Thank you.
Appreciate you sharing that advice, Steve.
Mr. Como.
Mrs. Brusink?
Mr. Edlund, perhaps HR should meet in the boardroom for committee meetings, just like we always used to, because then people, as people come in, they can sit down and listen to, but when you get into the smaller office, you know, there really isn't room for people to join you, so just something to consider. Because those meetings used to be held. I think, Pat, weren't you HR Chairman at one time?
They were always in there.
They were always in there? They were never...
I think, I think it's more of a logistical thing, because if...
Because it used to be in here.
If it runs a little bit beyond...
Well, actually, maybe Room 109 would be a better choice, because you've got a lot of people coming in here, setting up for the...
Well, that's true, thank you.
So, that may be a better, and I know we have had some meetings in 109 when we've had guests.
Correct. Part of the, you know, the, we get information at the very last minute from HR, so we can't really hold a meeting earlier in the week and televise it. It makes it very difficult to do that. So, we would either have to have our meetings earlier here, and have them televised when everybody's trying to come into this room, which would be very difficult.
Right, I understand, thank you.
Or hold it in another room.
But it just seems like... But it just seems like over the, when I go way back, because I've been around for a long time, that the meeting, the HR meeting, used to be on a different night, like CNI is or FNF. I don't know, help me.
Barbara?
Yes.
We used to have two meetings a month. And the main, the main meeting was held in here, and then there was always the last-minute meeting held right before the board, was always held over there.
Okay, okay. Thank you for reminding me of that. Because CNI used to meet twice a month, too. We stopped that.
All right, Steve, Steve, do you? Mr. Edlin, do you have anything else for your report?
I do not, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I didn't mean to skip over you. Now we will move on to the Policy Committee report given from Pat Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one action item tonight. Revisions to Policy fifty-one forty-one, sub-three G, are guidelines for handling communicable diseases. The proposed revisions clarify the parent notification language regarding head lice. The American Academy of Pediatrics and District Nursing Staff support parent notification instead of sending a child home during instructional hours. Since these revisions are for a policy guideline and require only one reading at the full board, I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brazil. Discussion? Mr. Edlin?
The language that's highlighted in our handout says "parents of students." Should that, and I realized before that it says "parents and guardians," but do we need to add the word "guardians" to that also?
Yes, yes. We often have situations where, it could be a foster child, it could be some other situations, but we often have guardians that are actually, in a sense, the custodial parents.
So will we be amending this language on line thirty-four to say "parents and guardians of students"?
Or guardians.
Yes. Parents or?
And/or, right.
And/or.
And that would need to be okayed by both Pat and by Barb. Is that a friendly, that friendly amendment, okay?
Good suggestion.
Absolutely.
Further comments, discussion? Questions? Okay. Everyone's clear on the, I mean, it was just a couple of words, what was changed. So we'll be taking the rule-call now, then, Sue?
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brazil.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight-zero.
We have no information items. The only discussion item, everybody was sent a copy of the new proposed policy regarding board pay raises. I got one call from a board member. If anybody has any objections, suggestions to that, please call either myself or Todd Gray.
It would probably be better if they called me so we didn't, don't create a walking quorum.
Okay.
If that's okay, and then I'll compile that information.
That's fine.
And our May policy meeting has not been set yet, but look at your packets on Friday and with a date. That completes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. We'll move on to our Technology Committee, presented by Patrick McCaffery.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Pat. And next, we will go on to Finance and Facilities Committee, and I will give that particular report. Tonight, we do have three action items and two information items. The first action item is the approval of the request to rename Central Middle School. The district has received a request from the Les Paul Foundation to rename Central Middle School as Les Paul Middle School. They have committed to covering one hundred percent of all the costs needed for the transition. Rob Bennett, the Central Middle School principal, and Todd Gray, our superintendent, have each convened a committee made up of community and staff members. Both committees have recommended accepting the naming proposal from the Les Paul Foundation and have followed Board Policy ninety-six-hundred and ninety-six-hundred-G to the letter, and that process took place over the last couple of months, roughly. Those committees did their work. The Finance Committee approved the request to remain, to rename Central Middle School to Les Paul Middle School, and I so moved. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Madden. Discussion? Mr. Edlin?
I'll let Dr. Langill go first.
Okay, Dr. Langill.
This is very difficult, and I don't know about the rest of you maybe as well as I. Have heard numerous, numerous people from not just the class of forty-five, although I have to say they're very organized, but across the board have phoned with concerns, and we have a letter, you know, here, too. I was on the committee, in fact, and I know, Todd, you convened it. I remember at one point, we had a motion to approve this, and then we decided not to do it as a motion, and then we decided to sort of just say this was a consensus, which it was. And at the time, I also, you know, shared that. I have to say at this point, and I know Sue Baker's here, and she's a good friend, that I would maybe not be able to vote for this, only because what I'd like to see us maybe do is be a little more creative. What came up in that meeting, and we had, well, actually, we had a couple of meetings of that committee, were a lot of ideas around the legacy of Les Paul. Certainly, naming the school after him, I think, was the first choice, and I understand that. But I also think that there were a lot of very creative ideas in terms of his impact on music, and I think one of the things that appeals to me is because in this district, we're really gearing up, and thank you, Todd, for this, and thank you, Tom Ajak, to doing more now with instrumental music, which I love. And so I think that there might be some opportunities to go back to some of the ideas that committee had, which would be to look at his legacy in terms of inspiring our music education within, maybe not just Central, although obviously he has a presence there, but across the district, and establishing his legacy in what might be as equally a meaningful a way. I did, and the many people that called, and I got dozens of phone calls, suggest to them, what if we call it, you know, Les Paul, the Les Paul Central Middle School campus? You know, can we do it that way? You know, as a kind of compromise? Because there's just a real hardcore opposition to this. I understand what Mr. Bennett did, and I understand that the feeling, at least at the Central Middle School, seemed to be almost evenly divided. I guess it was fifty-six, forty-four, so it was pretty close. But certainly out there in the community, among many, I don't know if I should call them stalwart, or, you know, people who feel very strongly about Central Middle School, and there's not a Mr. Central, so I understand that. But, you know, the Worthington argument, obviously, was, was an issue, too, that I heard about from people, and it's in our packet. So, I mean, I have to say, after being part of that committee and being very enthusiastic, and I still want to see Les Paul honored, I'm glad he is honored in all these ways, but I just wondered, in terms of our district, if this passes, fine. I think at this point, I apologize, but I probably can't vote for it, but I think that there is still a lot of other opportunities. So if this passes, fine. If it doesn't, I would be happy to be part of either reconvening that committee, because there were great people in that committee, or looking at ways to honor him in terms of specific musical legacy, since we're really so proud in this district of our music and our musicians, that might be another opportunity. So I, I'm just going to put that out on the floor, and I know I'm probably disappointing certainly people like Sue Baker, but others. But I, I think that at this point, I probably can't vote for it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Langill. Mr. Edlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've shared this story with board members, and I wanted to share it with the public because it was just one of those coincidental marks in time that happened. Couple of weeks ago, Alderman Bechter came to my house, and Charlie had shared some stories with me about Principal Worthington and the history of that campus. Spoke of him very highly and a very well-respected man within the community, and I think, I think a nod would do, Charlie, but the high school was originally named Washington High School and then changed to Worthington? Uh, Waukesha High School, I'm sorry, and then?
Waukesha.
High School, and then changed to Worthington. Okay.
And then he also formed this operation right here, which used to be the vocational school.
Okay.
And then when he left, that's become the name of it right now, when he stepped down.
Okay. For those who didn't hear at home, that Mr. Bechter said that he originally started the vocational programs in the Waukesha School District many, many years ago. So anyway, to carry on with this story a little bit, I'd just like to read an email with a few little thrown-in comments in there, but last week, I took off of work to do some remodeling around my house, and here's what happened. "As we ponder the potential renaming of Central to Les Paul, I wish to share this with you, board members. Please do not respond to avoid a walking quorum." Had to throw that part in there to protect myself on this. "I took off work this week to move along a major remodel of our kitchen in our old nineteen-twenty-five house. After remodeling the base cabinets, there was an area in the maple floor where the boards were perpendicularly joined in another remodeled area years ago, and that seam was a newspaper folded and used as a shim to even the floorboards." That's this newspaper right here. And for those of you who can see it at home or can't see it at home, if you buy a tire, this paper came from nineteen thirty-two, that's what's up on the screen up there. You could buy a tire, a Goodyear tire, for three dollars and eighty-three cents. It came with a lifetime warranty, so if you still have one, know that your warranty's still good. Okay, remembering, remembering that in nineteen thirty-two, we were still in the Great Depression, and I believe that Les Paul might have still been there before he dropped out. And after talking to Sue Baker, we kind of determined, because there are no records of Les Paul graduating from the high school, and I think it's pretty well-known that he didn't complete high school, two thousand and fifteen will be his one-hundredth birthday, would be his one-hundredth birthday. So by doing the math, Sue shared a story with me that Les Paul, at this time, was at the school, and during the summer of nineteen thirty-two, went traveling with a band. I hope I'm getting this right, Sue. And then came back, attended school in nineteen thirty-two in the fall, but then dropped out. Okay, so during this time period that this article was written, Les Paul was in his final year of school in the Waukesha School District. "After reading just a few of the folded pages in the nineteen thirty-two Milwaukee Journal with an article about Waukesha, about Waukesha and the school board tucked under my floorboards, I'm a little creeped out over the timing." Could you switch the next slide for me, please? Oh, you did? Okay. Could we turn down the lights a little bit, just so people might be able to read it? Now, I'm going to read this paragraph for people at home that might not be able to see it too well, but it says the Wauke, this, this is a section in the Journal Sentinel from nineteen thirty-two from a Waukesha correspondent that was under the floorboards of a current school board member who happened to find it there. And it says, "The Waukesha Board of Education Wednesday voted to accept voluntary salary cuts proposed by five school executives receiving more than three thousand dollars a year. Superintendent Gio Banting's salary..." Does that name ring, ring a bell with anybody?
Sure.
We have a junior high school named after Gio Banting.
Elementary.
Elementary.
Elementary, I'm sorry, that's correct. "Will be reduced twelve percent, or eight hundred dollars. JW Worthington..." And is that JW correct? I've seen other initials used. That was correct. Okay. "JW Worthington, principal of the high school, received five hundred dollars less, and three supervisors, now getting more than three thousand dollars, will take cuts of two hundred dollars each." Underneath that was the last paragraph pertaining to education, "As the other teachers, some time ago, proposed that they contribute two percent of their salary to the county poor fund, and the proposal was accepted by the board. The school board also voted against changing any textbooks next year and declared a moratorium on buying other school supplies it had previously decided to drop for teachers." So you can turn the lights back on now. Thank you. So here we have a glimpse of history in a very, very tough economic time in our history. It was a time when Les Paul was attending the high school. We know that his family was small, it was just his mother at this point raising him on a very limited income. So he was in a very impoverished situation. This was, this was not a good time in his life, I'm sure, although he was quite curious as a student. So I'll continue with my email. "Principal of the high school, JW Worthington, according to Central Middle School's website, had the high school named after him until nineteen ninety-three." And I don't know if that's correct or not. "I don't know why the Board of Ed back then changed the name, or if it was, or if there were an outpour of concerns like I'm hearing and reading now. I had one person suggest that we should consider changing Central to Worthington over Les Paul." Now I'm going to inject my opinion. "The acts of Mr. Worthington spoke for his character. I'm convinced that he would have been so very proud of Les Paul as the principal of the high school for thirty years, knowing that a young man, strong in his desires, poor as dirt, and gifted beyond belief, dropped out of the school, as was not so uncommon in those days, with the confidence to succeed in life with his dreams and passion. And all that happened on his watch, and because of the staff he had trusted in, staff that had character all their own." And therefore, I'd like us to consider, I will vote for this recommendation. I was, like I said, too creeped out about finding this underneath my floorboard some teen years later, but...
That's pretty weird.
That's not the only weird story I have, but that's for another, another time and not on the agenda. That I, I really would also like us to consider Dr. Langill's recommendation to reconvene the committee. There are other ways that the Les Paul Foundation would be, I'm sure, considerate of the Waukesha School District and its outstanding music programs. The fact that Les Paul was a musician, not only musician, but inventor, is truly inspirational because he did change the world. True, he didn't really live here because he was out there changing the world with the education that he had received from the teachers in the Waukesha School District under Mr. Worthington's watch. And I would like to see Mr. Worthington honored in, in a separate and unique way, but that's not our consideration tonight, but I would recommend that we consider bringing that up under, if Dr. Langill would be so kind as to reconvene the committee. And that would be the end of my comment. Thank you.
Just, just from a point of clarity, we are talking about only the renaming of the school tonight.
That's correct.
There, I know when we first started this process, there were a number of rumors saying that it's going to become a charter school, it's going to become a fine arts school, so on and so forth. Those are separate discussions. Those still could be possibilities, but tonight, we are just focused on whether or not we will rename Central Middle School to Les Paul Middle School.
And I would say that going forward, thanks to Mr. Cronin, Infinite Campus, we would never have these unknown questions ever again going forward.
Question, please?
Mrs. Brazil.
About, you know, how much money is attached to this for the district if we would decide to make the change? Because, you know, there has to be changes made in stationary uniforms, building...
Whatever the total is, the Les Paul Foundation will cover it.
Okay.
Whatever that total is. Now, Todd, I don't think you have a final number, but...
It's, it's all over the place. I mean, there's, you know, signage, legal paper, was that, that kind of thing?
Right, okay.
But I don't think there's anything tremendously extensive.
Do any scholarships come with that, that would encourage students to study music?
I, I don't know, there maybe, but we've not been offered that.
But not at this time? This time, it's just the name change.
Right.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reinacek?
I'm sure you guys all talked about this at committee and all the different names and options, but if this was the Waukesha School District and the Les Paul music program, then they could help fund the music program. I mean, they already have, but if it was, I know you're talking about all different things, do we have to vote on the Les Paul school tonight?
Yes, there's a motion on the floor, a second, and that is what, what has come forward out of committee, yes. Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, I, I guess like others, I've had pros and cons running around in my brain about this, too. But I'm settling in on two pros. P-R-O, post-yes, on this one, in that, number one, we have three middle schools, two of which are named after people with some significance, and we have one that's named Central, which, other than it's in the middle of Waukesha, means very little to me, at least. And I would like to see, for the, for the school, I'd like to see have something a little bit more significant than Central. Central Railroad, and Central this, and Central that. So from that standpoint, I like the concept of giving it some significance through this name. The other thing, I was, I was moved by what Sue Baker said about the fact that students that are... are attending that school or any of our schools will be able to see how they, despite whatever, and I think it came up in another conversation here, despite whatever impediments and barriers they have to deal with, they can take control of their situation and develop into what they want to develop into, rather than sit back and let, oh, woe is me, kind of a thing happen. So from that standpoint, at this point, I'm in favor of this. I do understand some of the concern, and maintaining the word Central is a possibility. But at this point, I would opt for just going with the Les Paul Middle School. That's where I am.
Ms. Mannan.
As I said at FNF, there's as many people, in fact, more people, that I got calls that wanted a change than not. So we have to consider the whole community. And we're going to make some people unhappy.
Yeah.
No doubt about that. I look at, as I said, I did suggest that we could put Central Campus under the name Les Paul Middle School. That's what we did with the STEM schools. So that's a good option. And I think it might give great incentive to people, or the high-risk kids, the kids at Charlie Phillips School, or the Harvey Phillips School, and dropouts. This is a man that didn't finish high school, and look what he accomplished. Worldwide, he's known. That's great incentive. And the teachers can use that through the years and show them how you can do things with an education from our Waukesha Schools. So I just think it's an excellent thing for our school. I'll vote in favor.
Dr. Langel.
Thank you. And I really appreciate this discussion from fellow board members, and this is not easy. What did come up, and I've heard it somewhat from you and maybe less from Bill, but came up very much in that committee and also in lots of the phone calls, was the suggestion, and I talked to Ty Gray, that the motion be slightly amended to read the Les Paul Central Middle School. And I think that then I could vote in favor of it, although I know there are people who want to just keep it Central Middle School. And I guess to the point about Hornig and Butler, those are brand-new schools. It's not the same thing. The people who are in love with its name and in love with this school and everything that it means in terms of the legacy, I mean, a lot of the calls I got were people from the class of 1945. And, oh, boy, that's a legacy. So I think maybe if the name Central were still, you know, central to it, it's different than Hornig and Butler. It's just not at all the same. I mean, I don't think it's even in the same category. So I would suggest a friendly amendment, and we can vote it up or down as the board chooses, that we consider naming it Les Paul Central Middle School. And I so move. Thank you.
Les Paul Central Middle School.
Central Middle School.
I second it, yes.
Okay.
And if I could remind the board that when we changed Saratoga and Randall, we maintained those two names as part of the campus name. So we do have a track record of that.
I would have to agree to that friendly amendment, and I don't, but you can make a formal...
I think I made a formal one, and it was seconded.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
You mentioned friendly in there.
Well, at first, I was thinking of being friendly, and then I thought...
Okay.
I'll make it formal.
Mr. Edlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we don't want to overstep our bounds here. We didn't make the recommendation to change this, and we do have a partner in this. And so if we make a motion tonight, it would be probably subject approval to the Les Paul Foundation, because they would be paying for all of the changes. You know, I'd certainly like them to be part of a discussion if there is going to be such a friendly amendment. I would suggest that we not vote on this tonight.
There is an amendment on the floor. We can discuss this now. I agree with what you just said, Mr. Edlin, that I believe the Foundation would have to have an agreement with that. So Les Paul Middle School was what they had approved. Personally, I think a better, if we were to include Central, a better solution is what Pat Mannan had recommended, which was Les Paul Middle School, Central Campus. And that plays, I think, a secondary role, Central Campus, but it still is in there. And that would be the equivalent of what we've done, as you had pointed out, Ms. Mannan, for STEM schools. I'm not going to support the amendment as is right now. I just think we run too great of a risk to have it not be approved by the Foundation.
But, oh, excuse me, then, are you asking that we table it? Pending a discussion?
I didn't ask that.
Well, it sort of sounded like you were moving in that direction. Okay.
Mr. Baumgart.
I actually liked the terminology better, too, when it said Central Campus. I don't have a big deal with it either way, because I actually had thought about the Central word being in there previously before we ever got here tonight. And the thought of calling it Central Campus is, to me, just, I like that sound of that. I have no reason to vote against the amendment, but if somebody else feels Central Campus would be a better way of saying it, I'd appreciate hearing it, so.
That name was discussed in our committee meeting, and it wasn't our first choice, but it wasn't, no, we can't go there. So I mean, the Les Paul Central Middle School. So if we, for whatever reason, convene that committee, I'm guessing that if that's what got it, if that's what it takes to get it through, the committee that Ellen and I were on would probably be okay with that. But, because it was brought up, it was discussed, but it wasn't a first choice.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Just one point about the campus. The reason it's STEM, says Randall Campus and Saratoga, because there's two campuses. So there's only one campus at Central Middle School.
But more than one building.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, what?
But more than one building.
More than one building, right. Well, yeah. But still only one campus. You know, you're at Waukesha as a campus, and, you know, they have many buildings, but it's still...
But I believe if we go back and look at the resolution, that there was, it was either an amendment or part of the proposal to retain those two names when we changed from, you know, when they were changed from elementary schools to the STEM. So there is, we do have that somewhere in the...
I have a point of inquiry.
Yes, Mr. Baumgart?
One of the buildings at Central was called the Worthington Building. Is that still the case?
Yes.
And the Edison Building.
It's the Worthington Building and the Edison Building.
Lincoln Building. Lincoln's there.
Lincoln's there, and the Worthington Building.
Edison is the one that went down. Or we took...
Yeah, so the Worthing...
The human school.
The Worthington Building is the east building. The Lincoln Building is the west building. Edison used to house the pool, and that's what was razzed.
Remember that.
Mrs. Brusink.
Yes, I just wanted to say that all of this work by the Les Paul Foundation has been done based on the title, the Les Paul Middle School. And I don't feel comfortable in monkeying around with the name that they suggested and are willing to support financially without going back to them. And, you know, to me, that's the courteous thing to do. They put in a lot of time and effort and interest, and the communities got involved. And I just don't feel like I should monkey around with what they recommended.
Then I do have a point of inquiry, too, because Mr. Becker was asked and entered into our discussion, which sometimes in meetings we allow and sometimes we don't. But since we did already tonight, then perhaps we should ask the Les Paul Foundation representative how they feel. We've already opened this discussion to somebody from us. And with that precedent, why not?
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Sue Baker, would you come forward, please? You've heard our debate here so far, and I know that one of the original names that was being tossed around was Les Paul Central Middle School. Does it make a difference, I guess, whether it's Les Paul Middle School or Les Paul Central Middle School?
Well, I don't have my board here. So I'm kind of stuck to give you, I can't, you know, give you a response.
So the Les Paul Middle School was formally approved by the Les Paul Foundation Board?
It was suggested. I mean, we never, the board never talked about Central Campus. And honestly, I don't know if it would be an issue or not an issue.
Okay. Okay, so you still have the final step of going back to your board with whatever name we approve and get their approval for the funding, no matter what we decide tonight, is what I hear you're saying.
Yes. I don't anticipate a problem, but, yes.
Okay. Ms. Edlin.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the friendly amendment, to say, subject to the approval of the Les Paul Foundation.
Well, it is a formal amendment on the floor, but you'd like to make a friendly amendment to the amendment, okay. And what is that, again?
Subject to the approval of the Les Paul Foundation.
I think that's going to be the case anyways. I think we heard Sue saying that they have to approve it, but we can still add that. Is that okay, Dr. Langel?
Sure.
And Pat, you seconded, correct?
I seconded.
Further discussion on the amendment of the name to Les Paul Central Middle School.
My question.
Yes, Mrs. Brusink.
So if we have a majority vote to call it the Les Paul Central Middle School, then we won't do anything until it goes back to the Les Paul Foundation and they come and say yes or no. And if they say no, then we start all over again.
Yep.
Okay.
First, there'd be the amendment, and then we have to pass the full motion, and then we would go back to them.
I can do that, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Edlin.
Would we give them the latitude to offer a suggestion to us?
I think we'd be open to that. I heard a number of people say sure.
Because there was other discussion of another potential name that I happen to agree with you, that Central Campus, to me, sounded better because it describes the location physically and keeps the name, and yet a separate identity. I think, kind of just saying Les Paul Central Middle School makes a very long run-on identification.
Yeah, my preference is Les Paul Middle School Central Campus. And technically, it is a campus because it has multiple buildings.
Correct.
As Pat had pointed out, I kind of see what Pam McCaffrey was saying, too. It's just one location, but technically, you know, it is a campus. I mean, campuses generally have multiple buildings. So personally, I would be more in favor of that naming convention.
That's kind of why I left it up. If this were approved tonight, they can come back to us and say, we'd prefer it be this over that. They might not like Central Campus themselves, but if they're agreeable to something, then I'd like to hear what it would be.
I was just going to recommend, since we have so many different things here, and again, I don't, I can't find my Roberts book, but if there could be a motion to table this, I believe my discussions with Sue Baker, you know, they want, they would like to get this done, but if it's done in May or June, it still meets their timeline. So I think to do this correct, I think it would be appropriate to reconvene the committee. Mr. Bennett, sorry again, and make sure that what we're doing is, instead of guessing on this. I don't think it's going to take that much time. We still have, I believe sometime 2014 was the goal here, so we have that time. And since there's so many different ideas, you know, we have a committee, but certainly, I'll try to find a time and a date that anyone else who wants to come from the board and weigh in on that, or if you want to provide information. But we've really got three different names on the table tonight. And Sue would probably have to go back to her foundation. Let's, I think to keep it clean, if we could, if it's possible at this point to make a motion to table, and then we can clean everything up.
Ms. Mannan.
Do you want us to withdraw these motions, so you don't muddy the waters?
That could be the second thing. That's the second option.
Okay, well, pending the withdrawal of the first motion, I'll withdraw my amendment.
And you're okay with the amendment? And I'm okay withdrawing, I'm okay withdrawing the initial motion, as long as, who seconded the initial motion? Ms. Mannan? Okay.
You're running over me again.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Todd, I'm sorry, Steve. We had an amendment to the amendment, actually, which...
Yes, I withdraw my amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
They're all withdrawn.
So we're back to ground zero. And as you can see, you can see that this is a sensitive and important decision. I mean, some people might be thinking, what's the big deal about naming a school? It's a very important decision to be made. And, you know, I'm glad that we are thoughtful about this process and that we don't just take it for granted and just kind of run through it real quickly. So I appreciate all the discussion. We will reconvene those committees and have discussions with the Les Paul Foundation as to what some various options might be. Yes, Sue, do you have a...
Do we have to move to table?
To table.
Well, not if you...
No, not, we withdrew, we withdrew the motion, so there is no table that's required.
Could I add something, Mr. President?
Sure, Mrs. Brusink.
I thank each and every one of you for the courtesy that you're extending to the Les Paul Foundation and to all the citizens of Waukesha who have spoke up one way or another. If we are going to take into consideration their feelings, then we need to go back and make sure that whatever action we take truly represents what they wanted it to be. So thank each and every one of you for your wisdom on this topic.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to move on with the second action item for the Finance and Facilities Committee. We're looking at the approval of the Healthstat contract. Christine Hedstrom and Jim Richter of Waukesha County shared a PowerPoint presentation with the Finance and Facilities Committee on the process leading up to the shared health clinic with the county and the city. They also shared a summary of the contract terms for hiring Healthstat to operate the clinic. You all received a copy of the contract between the city, the county, ourselves, and Healthstat. At Monday's meeting, the Finance Committee approved the Health Risk Management Agreement between Waukesha County, the City of Waukesha, and the School District of Waukesha and Healthstat, and I so move. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Langel. Sue, why don't we take the vote?
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
No.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Karen Reineckeck.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes seven-one.
Very quickly, that was a quick vote with no discussion. We've been spending a couple of years on this particular topic, forming the health clinic. And I believe, Chris, this was the final step for any of the groups, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
The school board got the final say.
All right.
So thank you very much. We are off and running.
Okay, well, now the, I think the real work, that's in quotes, begins now.
The fun work.
And we're looking, and the reason, the projected cost reduction savings, depending upon what your perspective is, so we're looking at $7.6 million between the three intergovernmental bodies over a five-year period of time, is that correct?
Correct.
Little over $3 million for us is what is projected.
Correct, yes.
So...
A win-win, in my opinion.
Yes, time to move forward. Thanks for all you've done so far.
Thank you.
Our third action item tonight is the approval of a comprehensive facility analysis. There has been a growing interest in borrowing funds to complete some of the facilities, projects that are too large to manage within the general operating budget. Under the revenue limits, there's a provision to fund energy efficiency, safety, and security projects through an exemption. In order to qualify for the exemption, the projects must be evaluated and approved by a state-authorized performance contractor. The first step in the process is to identify qualifying projects and determine the payback period through energy savings by completing a...
period through energy savings by completing a comprehensive analysis of facilities. Siemens Industries Incorporated, an authorized performance contractor, has been contacted to complete an audit of our facilities. They would conduct the study and identify qualifying projects, including calculating the energy savings and payback period. If the district decided not to pursue any identified projects, then there would be a charge of $20,000 for the audit. If we selected projects to move forward within, or with, then Siemens would act as the general contractor, oversee the projects, and guarantee the savings, and would waive the fee of the $20,000. The Finance Committee approved the recommendation to authorize Siemens Industries Incorporated to complete a comprehensive analysis of facilities with the intention of implementing a performance contracting project to improve operational efficiencies and infrastructure, and I so move. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Manning? Discussion?
Can I just point out that this, the only thing is the analysis at this point. This does not approve any projects at this point, it doesn't necess, it doesn't at all approve. Siemens is a general contractor in that regard. This simply approves the analysis at this point, and again, based on the information and the discussion at FNF, the idea is to start getting an idea of what projects need to be done, especially in terms of our aging HVAC systems.
Mr. Edlin?
Yes, I'd like to know from administration how and why, and what was the process used to select Siemens as the contractor in this case? Because they will be, they will be the exclusive contractor for-
They may or may not. We picked them for the study, they had a pretty good track record. Again, all we're approving is the study at this point, so they may or may not be the general contractor on this. I will tell you, typically, I like to use a construction manager approach or a negotiated general approach, not just hand it to a general contractor and say, you know, "Call us any year and tell us what you owe you." So it's, you know, we're not picking them for their general contracting ability, it's more for the analysis purpose.
But this is energy improvement projects, so they might recommend things like window replacement, which would be under the scope of a general contractor, probably.
Right.
But they also have a conflict of interest in the area of HVAC because they are, they are a contractor with the district.
Well, they are, they're performing the analysis at this point, but they are not the contractor. All we're voting on this evening is the analysis piece.
Correct, and if we don't choose them as a contractor, it's $20,000.
Well, if we hired another engineering firm to come in, we would be paying a large sum of money, too. Maybe they will be doing some projects, not all. I mean, just, you know, if they recommend windows and we don't think it's feasible or it doesn't fit our planning, our five-year building plan, we don't have to do that. I have been through this in one other district and the same thing. We were able to pick and choose the projects, we did not follow the full recommendation, we went with a partial recommendation, it was a different company. But in the end, it worked out for us. We were able to cover a lot of the debt costs through reduced, you know, some reduced utility costs and some other costs there. But I will tell you, from my experience, I don't want to approve this and think that we're just going to hand this over. That would be, that would not be managing well. I think we want to get the study done.
And I think you are correct, Mr. Edlin, pointing out that if they don't become the general contractor, Siemens will receive $20,000 for their efforts.
And if Siemens comes back and recommends, "We went through this building, you've got all pneumatic controls, and we recommend that you install DDC controls," are they automatically eliminated from the bidding process because they have a direct conflict of interest?
I would, I guess if they're recommending, yeah, I mean, they might be, they might be. And first of all, just because they recommend something doesn't mean we have to follow. We can say if there's another option, we choose that.
Right.
But I, again, I understand your situation. Again, I've been there with companies that manufacture a particular product and they're the general. And we have, my experience is, they've been excluded from some pieces of the bidding.
Right.
Because that would be a conflict.
Yeah, currently, about 50% of our buildings have Siemens computerized systems.
Right.
Some of them that run through our servers with IP addresses, you know, the technology thing. But they do have a large portion of our buildings. A lot of the other buildings either don't have anything in that realm, being digital or, you know, of that technology, or the stuff they do have is obsolete and we're, you know, we're just borrowing time right now. So I see about half of the district being low-hanging fruit for the contractor that we're asking to recommend a replacement, but we already know that we've got to do all this work. So there, you know, there's kind of a conflict there. We already know we have to do it, we've, you know, they're kind of positioning themselves to be a top contender to get those other buildings, which I'm not in favor of putting all our eggs in one basket, but-
And neither am I. So, Lori?
I'd just like to point out that this is a separate division of Siemens that does the energy studies, and that's all they do. So they aren't the manufacturer, they're not in the sales side. Their focus is energy savings and efficiencies.
So, and that's the entity that's been approved by the state as one of these businesses that can do these analyses?
They are, they are an authorized performance contractor.
Okay. And so with that said, there still is a potential then for Siemens as a whole to be part of the RFP? Do you know that? If we put out, when we put out an RFP, are they still able to respond? I guess it's a question that Steve asked.
It would be a totally separate division and they would respond, if that's a product that we were looking for. But there's nothing that says this process is identifying specific products. It's areas where-
Where the energy savings could be.
Where the energy savings can be found.
It's not that detailed yet.
And then Phase Two would be to identify how those projects would be bid out.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Langel?
Thank you. And just sort of a point of clarification, I mean, we should look at the language, because the way you read it to us, clearly Siemens is presuming that they would be able to bid on the follow-up, because they've said, "And if, in fact, we do the follow-up work, then we forfeit the $20,000." So there's a generic "we" there. And I just think we better be careful insofar as how this reads, because if they are part of the RFP, fine, we should indicate that, but if we're saying there could be a conflict of interest, I mean, I just think we have to be clear on that, because the way you read it looks like they're just assuming they can bid on it.
Mr. Baumgartner?
I agree with Ellen, I have that same concern. I know it's been said, but when you look at the last sentence or two on this executive summary, "Should the district decide to implement some of the identified projects, Siemens would act as the general contractor." That is, that is what you have down here.
Yeah, so we better be careful.
That bothers me.
You could amend that.
Well, the formal motion, so the formal motion is to approve the recommendation to authorize Siemens Industries Incorporated to complete a comprehensive analysis of facilities with the intention of implementing a performance contracting project to improve operational efficiencies and infrastructure, and I so move.
Okay, so you did not go so far as to put this in there?
So that is not part of the motion itself to use them essentially on that second phase, or any of that. That was part of our discussion as a whole, though, at FNF. So when I reported out, it was just part of my report, but not part of the formal motion.
I appreciate that it isn't, but I also think that what you read is where they say, "And then we," we better just be clear with them, because they are presuming that the generic "we" then would forfeit the 25, or the $20,000 if we go forward.
But that's, that's the whole, if we don't, if we go with someone else completely, then we pay the 20. That's, that's the difference.
I think the way I would look at this motion and this, this project as a whole, that it potentially will cost us $20,000 to have, it would cost us $20,000 to have this company come in and do this analysis for us. We are required by law to have, we can't just, like, submit our own report, our own analysis, and say, "This is what we want to do." We have to go through one of these performance contractors in order to actually take advantage of those acts, Act 32, Act 66, was it also?
Section-
Section 66.
Chapter 66, although I just like-
Yeah, so there's, there's a number.
The B-12.
So I wish I was better at my laws that have been passed, but, yeah, so I would be, I would, as you decide whether or not to vote for this, I would err on the side of thinking this will cost us 20 grand potentially. Mr. Edlin?
Yes, the reason I ask a question I did before is, how did we come up with this contractor to do this for us, is because a number of months ago, we had another contractor proposing to do the same thing for $65,000. So I have to question, number one, the comprehensiveness of this report for $20,000 versus the comprehensiveness of a report from another contractor for $65,000. And, you know, the reason that this proposal is being brought forward, and the particular act that was passed, is to allow the district to assess a tax levy above and beyond revenue limits without going to referendum. And so in performance contracting, the law was stiffened up a little bit to say that it has to be by an approved contractor, and you have to have a performance guarantee. But the state doesn't identify what the guarantee is going to be. It's pretty much up to the, what they're going to propose to us and-
So just, just so you know, at this time, the reason why this is coming up, there's a timeframe, there's a timeline, and we're kind of working backwards. We're in our budgetary process right now. We're trying to figure out what the 2014, 2015 budget's going to look like. We have now, for a number of years, been short on our funds for maintaining our facilities. We've talked about that quite a bit in FNF and even at this full board. Administration would like to make sure that we have the option to look at what is available. Again, this is only the first step, this doesn't mean that we have to go forward with, with any of the recommendations, but this would allow us to at least consider the options during our budgetary process and get it completed by the end of October so that we could have this part of our 2014, 2015 budget. Now, there's going to be a lot more conversations on what are these projects, whether we should move forward, and whether this makes sense as a whole to do in our district.
Right, there's, and there's no, we don't have to exceed those levels for property taxes. We can say, even though it's eligible for exceeding the caps, we can still keep it under. And in fact, if we do a significant amount of projects and we do have a real dollar savings, you know, my recommendation would be those savings cover as much of the debt service as we possibly can, and then maybe we need to put the rest of it under the caps. But in future years, three, four years from now, if things change dramatically, coming out of Madison, we, it does give the board and the district a little bit of flexibility. But again, I mean, I think we're way out in front of this. At this point, we're just getting the analysis approved. And the reason I like, I've had experience with Siemens before, and it's been pretty good, so when Lori recommended Siemens, that was okay with me. I know there's other good companies out there, but to take another 60 to 90 days to do an RFP and so on, I think we'd be putting ourselves in a tough, tough time crunch, so.
Mr. Edlin?
I'm going to disagree, and I'm going to vote no on this, just because I disagree with the process. I don't, it's not the only reason, you heard my other concerns tonight, but, you know, we've done a great job. Administration has done a fantastic job for us of going out to bid on a lot of different things and saving the district a lot of money. So this year, we're on target to save $1 million in our transportation costs. Okay? That's, that's direct savings because we have efficiencies in busing, we've switched to alternative fuel buses. That $1 million could be reinvested into these same projects that we're going to overpay for because we have to hire a consultant, because we have to hire a contractor to implement certain projects, because we already know these projects, and a lot of this stuff is already in our budget. We're just wanting to shift this out of our budget and get a new revenue stream going by going above revenue limits to be able to create this revenue stream. We've also saved money on our healthcare plan. We had a, you know, our family plan was around $24,000. We're down to around $20,000, and we've just about built up that cushion of cash that we need in that account. So we're going to be saving $4,000 per family plan. There's another half million dollars that we have that we could stick into a project like this. So, you know, in principle, because of Act 10, I no longer think that, in my opinion, that referendums are needed, nor do I think that exceeding revenue limits is needed. We have the tools to do what we want to do with whatever we want to do. Okay? The boards have a lot of discretion in how to carry out their business, and I think the taxpayers were, for so many years, overpaying on things like health insurance, that it's about time that we start living within our means. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Just real quick, if we don't move forward with this tonight, we will not have this option to consider at all during this budgetary process, that we take it essentially off the table. By voting for this tonight, at least we have the option to discuss, but we won't have that option if you don't vote for this. So I'm in favor of voting for this because I'd like to at least have the option. Okay? Time to take a vote.
Ellen Langel.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brazil.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
No.
William Baumgartner.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes seven-one?
No.
Six-two, I'm sorry, six-two?
No.
Seven-one.
Seven-one, okay.
Eight-one. Oh, seven-one.
Okay. I thought it was seven-one.
Seven-one.
Okay. Oh, boy.
It's okay.
Okay, and there's two information items still left this evening. Our monthly budget report, the committee received a monthly budget report for activity through April 2014. $5,518,523 was reported in general fund revenue, and $9,913,589 was expended during the month. $281,616 was reported in special education revenue, while $2,455,562 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection. 80% of the taxes levied this year so far have been collected. And then our final information item tonight is Steve Crandall was present at our committee meeting and provided an overview of TID number 23, TIF incremental District Number 23 being proposed for industrial development and job creation in the district. TID 23, if approved, will be approximately 25 acres and located west of Blue Mound Road along Silver Nail Road and adjacent to the airport. This, this TID has the ability to create roughly 25 additional jobs. And as the district representative of, on the TID Joint Review Board, any questions that you have can be forwarded to me, and I will make sure that those come up in the Joint Review Board meeting, which will be held on May 27 at 4:45. So we have some time. We had a full discussion at our committee meeting, and we kind of vetted through all the questions that we had, so. This is the final committee report, and we don't have a need for closed session, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we are adjourned. Thank you for attending tonight, and have a good night.